Say good evening, everybody.
I don't like it.
This is a special school board meeting of the Oaks Public School Board at Rome's Day, March 27th, 2024, at 7 o'clock PM. We're meeting in the Oaks Public School Central Office Conference Room. Present here in the room are board members Heimbach, Nagel, Sire, and Miel. Joining us by Zoom is board member Dave. Can we do a sound check, please, so we know Rhonda can hear us and we can hear her?
Hello?
I hear you. Can you hear us?
I can.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome visitors. We have with us our superintendent business manager, as well as Dave Earland and our principals. And Lori is with us. Thank you. The permanent visitor. All right, with that, we'll move on to items for discussion and possible action. The first item is ballot canvassing. Okay, so I have the little guide sheet with me. There is one ballot that has the secrecy envelope on the outside. Okay, so it was delivered in person.
No, it's got a, it's got a March 13th stamp.
Postmarked, and that's how they mailed it.
Yep, and it got here.
Pretty impressive.
So it has, obviously has not been opened. We can open it. And I, by just the thickness, I'm assuming it's just the ballot in there. There might be an envelope here, I don't know. But I have my absentee applications right here, and we can try and match it. If it doesn't have the information on the inside, we cannot take it.
Yeah, you would have to have a signature to match.
Right, yep.
So if it's, if it is unidentifiable, then we can't count.
So can I go ahead and open it, or do we want to just pass?
I would entertain a motion as to how to handle this ballot.
I would make a motion that we open it, it's postmarked.
Nagel moves to open the envelope, which we presume contains a ballot. Is there a second? Heimbach seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Roll call. Oh, it has to be a roll call vote.
Everything wants to be a roll call vote today, so I can find my little sheet. Okay, here we go.
Will you please call the roll?
Monica Heimbach.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Brian Sire.
No.
And Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to one. So would you like to open that now, or should we proceed?
I would like to open it now. And there is an envelope. And it does have a signature.
So then you will be able to verify that.
Well, we will. The next step would be to, you guys would have to verify the signature on the application. At this point, yes.
And then should it be deemed matching, then it will go in with the other absentee ballots that are received. So then the secrecy will be.
Correct, yep.
Not like when they're voting once. And only I got to see it, I can't even remember who.
You know, it really is. Everybody would like to look at the signature on the envelopes to the signature on the application.
Very interesting. Okay, so then do you want a motion to approve that ballot?
Correct. Do you guys approve, I believe that this is an acceptable ballot with matching.
And Rhonda doesn't get to look at it?
Well, I don't know how that's gonna work.
Of course you can hold it up to the camera.
I trust your judgment.
Okay.
Because we are videoing, even though nobody else is here.
Okay, so would it be appropriate for Rhonda to abstain?
Yes.
Yes, I will abstain.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion then to accept this ballot as a valid ballot? So Heimbach moves. Is, is there a second?
Second.
And Nagel seconds. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Monica Heimbach.
Yes.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day abstains. Brian Sire.
Yes.
Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passes four to zero with Day abstaining. All right, next scenario.
Not yet. All right, so the next, next one is, we have another ballot here. This one was, it has a correct envelope, and it's completed without a matching signature. Here is the application. You can't match it because it's not signed. However, this particular individual came to the school, filled out the application, stood at the window, completed it, handed it to Carrie or Marine, who dumped it in the ballot box at the time. The end of the night, I pick them up, matched them up, and at that point, it was noticed that it didn't have a matching.
They did not sign, they simply did not sign it.
They did not sign it. But they felt, they filled it out here.
And, and the handwriting on both the application and the envelope were completed by the voter, despite that there's no signature, but the handwriting was both completed by the voter, in your opinion?
Yes.
Did anybody try to contact this person?
I did not. I, I, I actually, I think I did, but it was too late when I noticed it. I thought I put notes on who I contacted, but I'm like, actually, no. Because the, the poll workers are the ones who noticed it. That's what it was, because they looked at, they were matching when they were writing the absentee ballots in. And at that point. That's the.
By law, what are.
I would say, unfortunately, since there is no matching signature, we cannot verify it's the same person. Which is unfortunate, because they filled it out here, never left the school with it.
I'll make a motion to not accept that ballot.
Is there a second? There's a second. Heimbach seconds. Is there any discussion?
I guess I struggle with not accepting this.
Well, that's why we're discussing. You know, I've not served on a canvassing board before. But it's, it's my impression that the canv, and I might be wrong. So, and this would be a lot more tense if, if, if we were teetering on the edge of.
Right, right.
A yes or no, but it's good to ask questions and clarify and get smart, like we did with this entire process. It's my impression that the canvassing board is to, you know, to kind of determine the intent of the voter and give the voter the benefit of the doubt if, if an honest mistake was made. And I can imagine that they were standing at the counter, and Marine and Carrie were very busy and didn't say, oh, you forgot to sign it. No, it says right on there. I'd be inclined to accept it. And knowing that it's not going to affect the outcome of this election, to do further research to find out whether that we, we did right. So either way, well, we should find out, right, whether we were, whether it was best or not. But I think that the power lies with this board.
It does.
And despite that there's no signature, one could look at the handwriting and say, well, gosh, yeah, that really is similar, but it's not a signature.
Pass around the application.
So was it the envelope that was not signed, or the ballot?
The envelope.
The envelope that contains the ballot.
Okay.
The application is stopped.
Okay.
I would guess that. I don't have to. Were any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, the, the motion is not to accept this ballot. Please call the roll. So if you vote yes, that means you are voting not to accept the ballot. Correct me if I'm wrong. Yes means no, no means yes.
Brian Sire.
Yes.
Rhonda Day. Well, yeah. Rhonda?
Yeah, I didn't know if I needed to abstain, since I can't look at it.
I, I would say you can, you can vote if you're comfortable voting without, without seeing it. I mean, that, that, we would not have had to have looked at it.
So, okay.
It means yes, yes means no.
Yes.
Yeah, we want to deny opening it.
No.
Okay, better yes.
I know.
No, yes.
I have a Sheila Nagel.
No, I had to think about that.
Monica Heimbach. And Sonya Miel.
I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote yes in this case. Kind of argue in favor of doing it, just because it's, it's not gonna affect the outcome, so.
So I have three to two to open it.
So three noes and two yeses?
Correct.
Okay. So therefore, we will, I declare this a valid ballot, based on the. Now wait a minute, wait a minute. He moved not to accept it. I get into this on my state board. He moved not to accept it, and that failed. I'm gonna call for a vote, to affirmative vote, a, a motion, an affirmative motion to accept the ballot for 100% clarity. Is there such a motion? I will make that motion. Nagel moves to accept the ballot. Is there a second? Heimbach seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Brian Sire.
No.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach. Rhonda Day.
Yes.
And Sonya Miel.
No, motion passes three to two, so I declare that the ballot will be accepted.
There's one secret to the design of a signature stamp. Okay.
I think that is the file that we have to open.
Absentee ballots, there are five ballots that appear to be, in my opinion, dated correctly, meaning they were postmarked correctly. I have attached the corresponding applications to each ballot, and it is your guys' job to verify that the signatures on the envelope match the signatures on the application.
158.
Five.
So we're gonna find the date.
There's one that's on the back upside down.
All right, and in this case, we, we are, I'm asking for a motion to approve the dates and signatures of all of these ballots. And I suppose if someone wanted to make the motion and exclude one or more, but unless someone wants to pull one of them out and act separately, I would entertain a motion whether or not to approve these ballots based on verifying their dates and signatures. So. To approve?
To approve all five.
Heimbach moves to approve all five of these ballots based on their dates and signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Sire seconds. Is there any discussion? Are, are you feeling like you should abstain on this one, Rhonda?
Yes.
Okay, I would agree. I mean, if that, if what we're doing is verify, and I, I know you can say you trust us, but.
No, I, I will abstain.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day, Rhonda Day abstains. Monica Heimbach. Brian Sire.
Yes.
Sonya Miel.
Yes, the motion passes four to zero, and Day abstains. Next scenario.
All right. There are seven ballots with matching, three, four, five, six, seven, with matching, four of them have matching applications. However, all these four were handed to me on the day of the election.
And they were due the day.
And they were due the day before, or postmarked the day before. None of them are postmarked. Three of them, I called and told them that I couldn't take them, but instead, you can come in and vote today. Two of them came in and voted. This one did not, and his voicemail box was full. He wasn't notified. So these, I, we cannot use.
We can, and you're asking for a motion to confirm that we will not.
Yep, but I have three more to add to that first. So that same day of the election, somebody from the post office came in and handed these three to either Carrie or Marine. And there's a note found in blue box after we closed on Wednesday, March 14th, that I think was the 13th. So on Thursday morning, they, either they, after 3:45, when the post office closed, or that morning. So again, they were late because they were not properly postmarked. So they were hand-delivered. So I called this one, and she said, yeah, I didn't think I was gonna get it there in time. So I came in and voted anyways. We're not gonna use hers. These two do not have names on the outside envelope. So therefore, we can't count them, because I can't, I don't know whose application to match them. So these seven, we need a vote. These seven cannot be accepted.
They do not meet the legal qualifications without even us doing any additional verification. So I am making a motion to disqualify those ballots. Is that a good term? Is there such a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Sire moves to disqualify those ballots that we just discussed. Is there a second?
Second.
Day seconds, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any discussion? Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Brian Sire.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach.
Yes.
Sonya Miel.
Yes, motion passes five to zero, and all of that match is disqualified from being counted.
Okay.
Next.
There is one set aside ballot. This individual came in with a driver's license that had his maiden name, not her married name. So when she told the clerks, she said, well, that's not who she was. So a quick phone call to my friend Brian at Secretary of State, he said, let her vote, and put it on a set aside ballot. She has 13 days to come into the school and provide a marriage certificate of some sort, or something, or a new driver's license showing she is this person and not her maiden name. She has not come into the school. Therefore, it is the disqualifying ballot.
Has not met the requirements.
Correct.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to disqualify that ballot? Nagel moves.
Second.
Sire seconds. To disqualify the set aside ballots. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Sheila Nagel.
Yes.
Rhonda Day.
Yes.
Brian Sire.
Yes.
Monica Heimbach.
Yes.
Sonya Miel.
Yes, the motion passes five to zero, the set aside ballot is disqualified. Now, do we go into reasons? Well, you can enter things in the book, and we can, it should, I just have these five to add. So, because we need you to be a part of the teaching contracts discussion and so on, we'll just be patient.
So should those be opened here, or?
Yes.
Yes. All right, that brings the total to 976 minus, now we're adding. We took June 8th. First, but we decreased it by the set aside ballots.
What was the original number of ballots on election day?
969 is what's on the full book.
And one of those was a set aside?
One was a set aside, and one was where there was no signature to the envelope. They had written her in.
Oh, okay.
But I just want to verify that that's set aside ballots.
But the non-signature one that you just mentioned, is that the one that we approved?
Did we just?
Yeah.
You added that back.
So, so we're taking minus two from election day.
And adding one back. So, so really, we had 968. Oh, no, no, no. I added her back, yeah. 900, so we have 967.
967 ballots were counted.
On election night. And we just added two, four, six, seven.
Including this, this, the one that we approved with the signature, with, that did not have a signature.
Yes, of the seven, two, four, six, seven. Seven new ones today is one with all the signature. Yep, and that, the set aside ballot was listed on here, so that's.
But it was not counted on election day?
No, because it was in, in the envelope. Yep.
So we're gonna come up with a total now of 974?
974, correct. Oh, okay. Madam President, I'm going to open up the envelopes and set the ballots, the ballot envelopes in the center, and then we will mix them up.
Half the gallery is on this side. Here. Yeah, I will, I can comment on this one, but the zipper separates a lot. No, I haven't related. Yeah, I want, I could comment on this time, but the zipper separates a lot. No, I haven't related. Yes, so it's just the.
All right, so one of these absentee ballots did not have their secrecy in here, and since you guys are all busy, you can see which one I opened and noted in there. So there is a empty ballot without a secrecy. Somebody like to open them and read them?
Sure, I'll take that very much. I, I like a lot of that. Hey, first ballots. Now, does this need to get official somehow, sometime?
Yes.
What does that do?
I do, yeah.
Okay, this is a no. Pass it around to verify it. It's a no, Rhonda.
Okay.
Second ballots. No. Here in this phone that is, the third one that was not in the envelope is a no. A fourth ballot. It's also a no. Next one is also a no. One is a yes. Seven and final. A yes. I for one will say I'm very glad that we weren't teetering on the average just for time. Right. So that makes it. Four hundred and eleven. Five sixty-three. Does that come up?
It does, about a ten feet.
Oh, yes. All right. So our final tally of votes, yes, is four hundred and eleven, no, five sixty-three. And so. I will entertain a motion to certify that as the final result of this referendum motion. I'll make the motion. Nagel moves to certify the final ballot count of four eleven, yes, five sixty-three, no. Is there a second? Sire, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? One more call, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, please call the roll.
Rhonda Day?
Yes.
Uh, Brian Sayer?
Yes.
Monica Heimlich?
Yes.
Sheila Nagel?
Yes.
Sonya Miel?
Yes, the motion passes five to zero, the election results are certified, four hundred and eleven votes, yes, five hundred and sixty-three votes, no, per total of nine seventy-five. Thank you. We just keep learning, don't we? All right, um, that concludes item eight, ballot canvassing. We have two teacher contracts to approve. A, a contract for Sarah Mir. And Torianna Burke. Where's she from? Where's she been?
Um, she lives just by Verona.
Oh, okay.
She is doing a long-term subing position in Lisbon currently. She's the. Stepmother of a second grade student.
All right, so, um, is there a motion to approve these two teaching contracts which were in your pocket? Heimlich moves. What?
Yeah, I had. It was a big batch.
Okay, uh, there's, um, Heimlich moves to approve the two teaching contracts in our pocket. Is there a second?
Yes.
Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Call the roll.
Monica Heimlich?
Yeah.
Rhonda Day?
Yes.
Brian Sayer?
Yes.
Sheila Nagel?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes five to zero, the contracts are approved. Next, we have a long-term facilities plan.
Okay, so, um, when we hired ICS, when we had contracted with ICS ten months ago, eleven months ago. Our main objective was to have a long-term facilities plan in place. And because of this current, of the events that happened during that time, we ended up having to kind of shift our focus, but. So Lori and her team, um, went back and delivered the promised, uh, ten-year plan. This is just the first draft. That is here and the facilities committee just met at five thirty and we went over some. Stuff, some ideas, some thoughts. And, um. I, maybe I'll let the board members talk here in a minute, but this is just a rough draft and one thing, uh, you can see on the top. And so we'll make sure that this gets, um, so, yeah, we share, then Rhonda can see it. Sorry, Rhonda. Um, if you can see the different columns, uh, Lori has. So the. That is the. They are suggesting that, that we do that fix and then you can see the improvements that need to be done. The estimated budget in today's dollars, that's really important to remember because some of these things are gonna be pushed out ten years and. It, it's figured into the formula, five percent. Um, inflation in there, then the soft costs are in there and did I miss anything else that was in there? Oh, yeah, the contingency, um, especially with the billing or age, right? You don't know. So that's contingency and everything is built in there, so. I mean, the things are just super important. So you can see that the budget cost today and then ten years down the road, how much it's expected to cost. So this is just a rough draft again. It's laid out for us to look at. Um, and I'll tell you where we're at, gonna be out as you're looking at it and you're thinking about it, board members. Taking it back, we'll, we'll revisit it, um, and I'll let board members again tell you what the next step is, but to remember, we will be in the negative in our building fund at the end of the year. So we're not sending out a pot of money there. In the miscellaneous, we're expecting to have about two hundred thousand dollars, but we're gonna have to, you know, keep that in that fund one. And, um, we are on declining enrollment, so we're expecting our general fund to be going down again next year. So there won't be money sitting in the general fund, so. I know suggestions are doing smaller projects. We don't have the money to do smaller projects. Um, so just it, you know, as you're looking at it and you're thinking about it, those are some, some things to kind of keep in the back of your mind where we're at monetary wise, but. We did talk about some other stuff, so maybe I'll hand it off to board members.
Sure, I guess, uh, my suggestion was to put out a post-referendum survey to the community. We want to know, um. Why, why there were no votes, um, you know, what was the reasoning behind them, what we can do moving forward to shape this plan? I guess we were. All pretty under the consensus that. These are still critical needs that aren't going away, um, that there's really. Nowhere that we can take off of that. There are, I mean, maybe different ideas to throw around, but before we go down that path, we wanna, we wanna get feedback from the voters. And see exactly what was their mindset be, behind these votes.
Yeah, um, exactly. We wanna figure out what's going on and then we wanna get together, have another meeting. So then we have an idea of what everybody's thoughts are out in the public and from the teachers also. And then we would like to have a forum, question forum with the public. Bring them in and then we would have a chance to. And have our ducks in a row on some of the questions and thoughts that people are thinking.
And also invite our legislators to answer questions about the legacy fund that's been, having not been different. Different things that we've been hearing about, uh, the state stepping in and. What's? What better way to hear it than directly from them?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so. So doing surveys, right, doing a survey of the community and, uh, pretty soon here, we'll, we'll get on that, you know, getting it out while things are kind of fresh. Um, of the community and also of the, our staff members, um, to see, you know, their thoughts on it. Um, using the information from the survey and then when we have, we'll have a public forum or that's what we're talking about having and including our legislatures, legislators, which I've already talked to, they're willing to come, you know, and to explain. I'd understand having the board members on that, having, um, ICS being there to answer some questions. And using the information from the survey to kind of, you know, help us plan for it because, um. Knowing what their concerns are, so we can make sure that we're addressing those concerns and, you know, and have answers for people.
How are we gonna target the surveys that's hitting us that we need to hear from? Yeah.
Or is anybody?
I know that. Yeah, I, I would hope that those that, you know, voiced concern and, um. Were against it and I, we all heard that, that, that they understood that we have needs, right? Um, but they just felt that there's a different way to approach it or, and I'm hoping, you know, and they can also see our long-term plan and can see all of the needs that we have and. I'm hoping. Able to move forward, so, um, we'll definitely spread the information, but, uh, somebody said you can. Take a horse water or whatever, you know, if you can't make a drink, so we'll provide it and hopefully they'll give us some feedback and then we'll. Plan is to have some kind of a forum or something where people can come in, you know, to give their information, but if they don't come in, then. I don't know what else.
So you'll make up a survey and then let us look at it? And then. You'll send it out?
Yeah, similar to what we did in the fall. I'll do a draft.
Yeah.
Then you guys can review the sessions and. Approve it and then we can agree on how that goes. Sent out and advertised.
Rhonda, are you able to hear Lori when she speaks?
Yes, for the most part.
Okay. I mean, if you wanna come up to the table, Lori, that would be fine. I, are we? Are, are you, are we gonna be hearing more from you? Are we gonna discuss that thought exchange thing at all?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
All right.
I'm, I will send you guys the thought exchange information, so you got it.
So a question, um, on this draft ten-year plan. The, the one that stands out because I had asked questions about it is the, the Votech building needs and the men's and women's bathroom remodel at five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Specifically, I had asked the question, and if I remember right, that, um, that dollar amount was based on the, um. Individual stall, gender free bathroom, or, you know, multi-gender, individual stall restrooms with a common sink area. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so if, if we went with a, um. The traditional design like there is now and just replaced all the fixtures and plumbing. The.
Yep, and that was input, I was just gonna grab, one year I put that in there.
Twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, yeah. Um, that individual stall was input from the director was there, so that's what we budgeted originally. Um, twenty twenty-eight, you know, I put it over a few years. I mean, if we've been in it lately, it, it probably needs a little sooner, but, um. It still functions, it's just. It's just.
Well, shabby.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, but so. Are there other items in the estimated budget column that you would say are designed for. At, at a higher cost than just the most basic renovation? Uh, that, that's the example that stood out to me, but is there anything else in here that you can think of that? Might be overstated or could be done for less?
Well, you can see there's some things on there that are. We'll, we'll take the lockers, for example. I mean, that's not. That, that's not gonna necessarily change your operation, okay, but you really as a board, that's a, a big, it, big, uh. Big enough project that you should be considering that at some point, right? Um. The classroom renovations, that one, or kept classroom improvements for the high school, that one's in alignment with those, removing those, um. Closets. So if forever, whatever reason you guys said, you know what, we don't wanna go that far. Then we could co, pull that back again and we have a little bit more just like, kind of. Piecemeal little things together that you could do that would be a less wreckage. Um, like, well, let's now plan to replace carpet in a couple spaces. That can be. I put that out. That's okay. Um. Thank you. So twenty thirty, so that's a ways out because that, that is something that, yep, it doesn't. It, it's a little bit more aesthetic and it also is about class size, you know, you're making do with this work footage today. But ideally it should be bigger. So. Basically, your next five years are gonna be your most realistic. And then we can modify from there. But I can't perceive in ten years you saying, yes, let's continue to keep that closet. And we'll just take this chalkboard down. You know, I mean, in ten years, you're gonna be like, no, we really do need to do something. If, if you financially. Everything else of, you know, I mean, we have, I kept in there because it's real, is your, you have your older rep, uh, locker rooms. So this would be the locker rooms that are between your two gymnasiums. You know, you have ADA compliance, um, restrictions there, so they're not ADA compliant, but in toilets in those rooms. And then your showers are more the game style. So I mean, you really do as a facility committee and as a board, should be looking at some day needing to update.
Well, Lori said the rugs are not on here either, right?
Right.
So you, you know, obviously you'll have to, we'll have to update the rugs or whoever's here will have to update the rugs.
They fell out, just, they're really on that border of that ten years, they're, they fell out of that top, so they're not on here today, but they will be in a year or two. They'll be adding a bathroom. Uh, anything on the year? That doesn't have, I just have three scenarios. Um. If it doesn't have a year assigned to it, that means it's, because it's included in another project. Uh, for example, the ceiling, high school ceiling replacement and the lighting controls, that is. Part of the HVAC improvements if you were to do that. Um, I didn't take it off because if you weren't doing that, you have a lot of two-by-four ceilings in the high school that are really in need of. Replacement at some point. Um, so I would suggest that something be done in the future if you don't end up doing the HVAC. Um, and then your lighting control is the same thing that, that would be good to be, you know, that, you don't have it. So having lighting controls, um, to meet today's energy code. But right now, there's no, it's not. Uh, it would be part of the, the item above with the HVAC. Same with the elementary lighting controls would be part of the HVAC improvement. Uh, because again, that's gonna get pushed into that due to code, energy code and today's requirements. due to code, energy code and today's requirements if you're doing the project. Public.
Love the sprinkler system.
So that is in your HVAC project. And the reason it's not a separate line item is because really, unless you do a major project, your grandfather did, and they're not going to force you to do it.
So what it's considered a major project, is it by dollars?
Well, that's what's interesting, is, is usually the discretion of whoever reviews your plans. You know, so it's not like a hard and fast, this will push you into that. Uh, but if you're taking down all your ceiling and you're spending millions of dollars to update a space, we have seen in the plan review, they force you into it. Uh, if not, maybe they make you do some other major, um, fire safety improvements. But regardless, they make you do something, because they can and they won't plague you on it until you start doing improvement. Um, same with, you know, some of the ADA pieces too, is once you make major improvements to your building, they're going to make sure a portion of it is going towards improving your E. Those are just, again, discretionary of your inspector. For planning you and inspection.
I think more than anything, that this is an awareness of what we have to do, right?
Absolutely.
And for whoever comes after me or who comes after you, something doesn't get set to the side and they forget about it, and then it comes and bites them in the backside, right? That, um, that we are, in, in, it's not really even the dollars, I think it's more of this needs to be done, these need to be done, and the fact that if we don't take care of this now, it just gets pushed down further, be it five years, be it ten years, then everything else gets pushed down further, so I think that that's the whole reason for wanting this plan, was that.
It kind of prioritizes what ones or two.
Is it fair to say that in any given year, something could have happened that that's going to move something up the priorities list?
Yeah.
Or, and, and push something else further back, and, and it would have to prioritize every year based on what's going on, what has happened?
Yes, yeah, so this is, um, it's interactive on the year, so we can move that around easily, and it'll just move it back and, you know, to the right associated on this side. Um, and this is a yearly document that you review every year, it's not, you know, you don't just develop it once and then it's put there. I think it should be next year, you know, what, what did we do over the summer, what did we see happen maybe next fall, when you turn the sprinkler systems on, or, uh, the, the heating system on? Uh, what happened that we didn't expect, you know, those are things that every year the district could be reviewing and, and verifying while you do your budget.
Looks like something that would have been useful for years.
Yeah, right.
Good work, and this is a draft, and so what are the next steps? Are we to adopt this, are we to approve it at some point, I understand not tonight, but or is it just, is it always a draft?
I think it's a working document, and I, I think this is an excellent tool that the facility committee would be reviewing, you know, throughout their meetings all year, um, and having it in front of us, so I'm not really, until a project maybe gets put forward, I don't know if there's any formal people that have to be, that, that's me, but you guys in the work can decide if there's anything, because I think it will continue to move each year, or to modify it slightly.
Board seven is in twenty twenty-five, but that one just being pushed.
All right, so I'm not hearing that there's any action to be taken on this, but I appreciate having it and having discussion on it. Having it in that portfolio. Any other comments, questions? So what I'm hearing is some next steps are going to be taken, we'll be seeing a draft of a survey for feedback, um, and anticipating in perhaps the next two to three weeks, um, okay, survey would be up to the public and, uh, staff and, uh, a public forum. All right, uh, with that, unless there are other comments about facilities, we have um, a special meeting next Tuesday, second.
Oh. Uh, yeah, B eleven, very twenty.
Five thirty P M.
That was our final day.
Four to at five thirty, yeah, right here. Um, and then our regular meeting Friday, April nineteenth, third Friday.
Yes.
And Friday, May seventeenth. All right, um, as this is a special meeting, no additional business can come before the meeting, and I will thank everyone for being here, and I'll declare the meeting adjourned at seven fifty-six.